Commission meeting for Thursday, March 16th at 6:30. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll go ahead to Angela for a roll call of Commissioners.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Melcher?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Branson and Commissioner Wolfius and Journey are excused. They called and let me know they were going to be out.
All right. So this is a portion in our public hearing for public comment. If there's anybody wishing to address the commission with things that are not on the agenda for tonight, now would be the time to do that. As there are none, we move on to the meeting minutes for March 2nd, Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any corrections or addendums to the very, very short minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Moving on. Keep up our momentum. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the conditional use permit CU 23-01 at 6:32. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a four-lane public recreational vehicle waste disposal facility, wastewater disposal facility, including a potable water fill station. The proposed facility will be located off 24th Avenue, south of the railroad tracks and west of the FAC site for the homeless. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.25.040B. Recreation-oriented uses or activities not listed as permitted permitted in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, 1725040F. Government structure or use of land or public utility facility, tax lot 2204, contains approximately 216,493 square feet and is in the recreational commercial zone. So I will go ahead and ask if anybody has any personal bias in regards to this application?
I do not.
I have none. Okay, any, sorry, any conflicts of interest?
No.
No, I have none. Any ex parte information?
Nope.
No, I have none. All right, so we'll go ahead and go over to Angela for our staff report.
Chairman, can you open the public hearing for me, please?
I did it 6:32.
Oh, did you?
I'll do it again. That's okay.
All right, staff report. All right, as you read, this is a conditional use permit to allow for a four-lane public recreation wastewater disposal facility, including a potable water filling station. The subject property is not in special flood hazard area. The subject property does not contain inventory wetlands. The subject property has frontage and access from a joint to private, joint-use private access easement off 24th Avenue and through the north portion of the city of Sweet Home Public Work Yard. It has access to city water services and 24th Avenue with a utility easement co-located with an access easement. Sanitary sewer connection can be made along the southern border of the property connecting to the city mainline. The use is listed as a the use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district and complies with the development requires of the underlying zone. Staff finds that the subject property is in the RC zone. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a four-lane public recreation vehicle wastewater disposal facility, including a potable water filling station. The applicant is applying for the conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.25.040B. Recreation-oriented uses or activities not listed as permitted on Sweet Home Municipal Code, 1725040F governmental structure or land, use of land or public utility facility. The proposed use shall comply with the special standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.25.050D. For this application to comply with applicable city codes and state and federal law, this application may require additional permits. If this application is approved, staff recommends a condition of approval that prior to operation, the applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the City of Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 23-01. The characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, and location of improvements and natural features. Staff finds that the subject property is currently a vacant bare land parcel. However, the historic use of the property was industrial. The site size, dimensions, location, topography, and access are adequate for the proposed use. The proposed development is timely considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. Staff finds that the proposed public recreation vehicle wastewater disposal facility and potable water fill station is timely. The easement through the city of Sweet Home property abutting 24th Avenue shall allow for adequate transportation needs to the facility. City water and sewer services are available for the site. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which the sustainability limits, impairs, or precludes the use of the surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying zone. Staff finds that the abutting, abutting the subject property to the north is a vacant lot zoned recreation commercial. Abutting the subject property to the east is a public facility zone industrial. Abutting the subject property to the south is a mixture of commercial and residential uses zoned highway commercial and abutting the subject property to the west are commercial uses zoned highway commercial. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area. Any negative impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties and on public can be mitigated through application of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval that include but are not limited to those listed in this chapter. Staff finds, or staff has not identified any negative impacts to adjacent properties. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this chapter of this report. Pardon me. Conditions of approval. In approving a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission may impose, in addition to those standards and requirements expressly specified by this chapter, additional conditions determined to be necessary to assure that the proposed development meet the decision criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, the city as a whole. The provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These continued conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that a condition of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the applicant, that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and decision criteria in Section 3 and as required with Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in Section 3. Recommended, recommended conditions of approval for CU 23-01. One, the final configuration of the proposed four-lane public recreation vehicle wastewater disposal facility and potable water fill station shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application as attachment B. And number two, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits as and requirements. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 23-01. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal period pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date of the written notice of the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission's decision on this matter be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. After the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. After opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application CU 23-01, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report. Setting of 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application CU 23-01, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. There's my staff report. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for staff?
Will this be open to the public?
Yes.
And will there be fees? So it will generate revenue? Probably not a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's the applicant probably answer better, but the intent is for it to at least pay for itself.
Yeah, okay.
And the city's interest is to ensure that wastewater usage negatively impact our system. But also there will be a potable water filling station, which is better than what we currently have. When we have people fill up the water, they go to our right now it's a wastewater treatment plant and our staff has to help them automate a system. Better situation.
Is the water metered?
The water, this, this would involve the, the water would be metered and the hopefully the, we have it set up so that the waste disposal rate would take care of whatever volume we would expect.
Okay. That's all?
All right, at this time, I would invite our applicant to come forward if they wish. Or both applicants, you can, we are up a second chair if you'd like. After having a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure. My name is Andrew Rappe. I'm an engineer with Udell Engineering in Lebanon. I sit 63 East Ash Street. I'm the project engineer on the project.
I'm Tristan Davis, the operations supervisor for Lynn County Parks out of Albany, 3010 Ferry Street, southwest in Albany, Oregon.
If you guys could, for the record, just quickly state the purpose of the application and what we're hoping to do here.
The purpose of the application was for us to get the proper zoning to move this project forward and start our development there. The county has actually gone out and been ordered to grant for funding for construction of the project.
You guys have any questions for our applicants?
Just by way of
Yes.
point of order, it's a conditionally used.
Conditional use, correct.
Will there be an attendee onsite or just people just drive-throughs or money collection? How does that all work?
Um, our intent right now is to use an automated system and we've used one of those pretty successfully in the county at our Riverbin County Park for like the last three years. It doesn't require staff to be there to monitor it. I do have staff moving through seven days a week, so my intent is as they come through town, they would stop in and check on the facility. My long-term goal is to have security there, so it'd be 24 hours a day monitored by video surveillance.
Will the area be fenced?
Um, maybe. We hadn't decided that yet. My intent would be is to fence it just to make the guests be safer and secure the property would be my intent.
Is there any like hazards, like if a kid was out there and lifted a lid or something falling in, or is it too small?
No, the design and especially with the automated system, the automated system is locked until you like swipe your credit card to pay for your dump fee. And then it releases the lock for a timed period and it's, I mean, the opening going into these is like four inches, so.
Yeah, that makes.
Yeah, pretty small.
Because I'm assuming this is hooked directly to the sanitary sewer. It's not a holding tank that pumps out, it's straight in.
The only reason I think you would have to have a holding tank is if the engineering required some sort of pump, pump system, but I don't think that was required.
Yeah, it's not necessary. The sewer main is pretty deep in allocation, so.
Yeah.
The direct connection.
Cool.
Is the intention for it to be a day-use facility or a 24-hour access?
Um, I think we're gonna, I think our plan with that was initially was to be to to be a 24-hour access for the public to come through because we always with our department prefer to lean towards allowing the public access. If it becomes a problem in our design, we're gonna basically put a gate in there so we could, if there are issues after hours and we need to limit the time, then we would at that point pursue, you know, looking into the operations of how do we limit the public's time there, but the intent would be, it would be 24, 24-hour access to start.
Would you have security camera?
I would. That's my intent is to put an internet connection in and have, have 24-hour surveillance on.
So with this, are we gonna require a lighting plan be submitted as if it, I mean, 24-hour access, are we worried about light pollution into the residential section to the south of this?
That, that could certainly, we hadn't discussed lighting. Obviously, if they're, if they're gonna do 24-hour, you would need lighting, but with the size of the property, I think you could plan the lighting to not really be any more close to the neighboring use. That being said, first, perfectly within your authority to add a condition, that's something be submitted. I don't see that as being a huge barrier.
Okay.
No. So with it being a public use facility, I'm gonna make the assumption that we're gonna have signage on, on the street directing people to this facility? Or are we gonna leave it unsigned for a while to see, based on functionality and then add signage? Or how, how would someone find us if they didn't know about it?
We're gonna, we're gonna advertise it in like our, we have a user guide that we put out to our guests and advertise it that way. We will, the intent would be work with ODOT and get signage up on Highway 20 like we've done with our other parks and facilities. And so that requires working directly with ODOT to get signage out on the main highway.
Okay.
Given the traffic we have with boats and RVs, I think just since I'm on Highway 20 and everybody who gets the picture real quick.
Yeah, I mean, a facility of this size with this design, which looks pretty fluid, I think word of mouth is gonna spread it pretty quick. I had one, one last question. Everybody's kind of jumped in and got, gotten the questions I have, which is fantastic. The, I noticed there's some garbage cans and an area for recycling. Is that something that Lynn County is gonna be servicing as part of their grounds with the other parks, or is this gonna be contracted out to the garbage company to come service?
It would probably be contracted is the direction I'm going. Staffing at this point is with every public agency is a struggle, certainly is for us, so we're leaning more towards contracted services. So it's something I'd probably just put that on a garbage route with the sanitation company. I mean, down the road, if it, if it got to the point where I had staffing levels or we could, we could handle that, then we would certainly take it on, but I think to start with, we would just put it on a route.
Yeah. I think the design is gonna allow for easy garbage service, so that's nice. Bypass lane. Well, I don't have an RV, but I'm, I know a lot of people that do, and this is gonna be something that's pretty welcome. Yeah, nice, easy, clean facility. Does anybody else have any questions for our applicant? I've had mine answered, so. Do you have anything? No? All right. Well, thank you so much. I encourage you to stick around in case we have any other questions that pop up, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and we will continue to go through the motions. So if there's any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application, now would be the time to do so. Any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against the application? And any neutral testimony, not for or against, just wishing to be heard. As there are none, we will close the public hearing for discussion amongst the commission at 6:50.
I don't know, I think this has been something that's missing in town, so.
Especially if we do want to expand our recreation.
Yes.
Here.
And I, you know, originally I was thinking the spot was kind of weird, but at the same time as that other property across the tracks has developed and at some point possibly Quarry Park and the Jamboree and all that down there. It actually is a really good spot.
Yeah.
For something like this, and it's not a very developable, developable piece of property.
Probably wouldn't be too desired.
No.
Considering its location.
Yeah.
Right next to the tracks in the homeless community.
And actually, you know, I didn't think about it till just now, but the homeless community having access to this, whether.
Yeah, the right place.
Yeah.
It is.
That would be amazing.
I'm assuming at some point in the future, as that mill property does develop, there probably will need to be a signal there.
At 24th Avenue?
Where this come, or 24th and Main?
Yeah.
So the, the plan is, there is a, an approved crossing order with ODOT for an extended 24th Avenue across the railroad track. So there would be, when development occurs, there will be a, a proved fully developed crossing.
Signalization at Main and 24th.
The traffic signalization, that, that's similar.
As the mill property develops.
It would be
Yeah.
built and driven.
Yep.
And that would, the time be determined by ODOT as well.
The exact type of signal and the exact threshold will be dependent on that.
Yeah.
But that, that's probably something that will be discussed as part of our transport, transportation system plan update that we're about to stick off, so.
Yeah.
I think that's something like adding some sort of lighting plan to make sure we're not imposing on the community that is living right against that property line. And also, I'd really like to see something that it says that there will be a fence and a gate when it opens. So just in the event we find that there is issue with, you know, people late at night being at that property, that there is something already there that we can take and also to ease the mind of the residents who live there to know that even though there might be 24-hour traffic moving around behind their properties, that there will be a fence and something to keep them from.
Just kind of man to their, yeah, correct. I guess that would be, my biggest thing I think was the lighting, just to make sure that we weren't blasting New Eliege into the residential area.
I, and fencing, I think also, when you mentioned the, because I had not seen the recycling and trash on a property, which I think will be great, but it will also keep people who in the residential area from dumping their things over there, because I could see that area may become a popular dumping site for the community to bring their additional trash.
Yeah.
The homeless site right next to it is, it probably almost on a daily basis after I would, I mean, that's a good problem to have, I guess, is just not getting going out into the street.
Right.
Well, and the, the nice thing is hopefully the, the homeless, the shelter facility area will have, you know, place waste management and then it can be part of the route to, you know, pick up there.
And I, I will add that next door, the, the FAC facility has security on site there and no dumping is permitted there. Any donation
24-hour.
of materials that are intended to give to the home have to go through FAC. And so, and they, it, it's a sad state that there's a lot of people who justify their getting rid of essentially garbage by saying that
Yeah.
they're gonna give it to people who need it. Well, a lot, I, I think I saw a homeless guy once carrying a king-size bed, king-size mattress, and it's not feasible, it's not helpful. It's, it's really just junk.
Well, people were dumping couches behind the old city hall.
Exactly. So that, if, if anybody has any indication that that is happening at FAC, we need to talk to them about that because we can't allow that to, to even get a toll. But we would certainly be concerned about trash at this facility.
That, that was my concern, and I understand what they were saying about staffing issues and servicing it, but if it's contracted out and you know, they're going through there regularly and dumping the cans, then.
I think you'd wanna have the cameras trained on there and make sure that it's not being abused by.
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Wood on the fence, keeping people from just, I don't have to pay for garbage service now, so I can dump it free. So I, I mean.
It's like a very simple deterrent.
Right.
It's a basic.
Those would be, my two biggest concerns would be the fence and the.
Will there be any city permits issued as part of this? Any building permit or?
This will require plumbing permits, obviously electrical permits, but that'll be through Lynn County. We will have a, a our own processes for connecting to water and sewer and, and all that.
SDC fees on this?
Uh, this would qualify as a, in one of the areas where you can, where they can be waived.
Okay.
Something that we'll look into doing, because this is really about, and yes, it's an impact on the system, but it's, we, we would probably prefer to set the rates to something that would take care of that.
Okay.
But we, it's something still that's yet to be determined.
So any site plan that they would submit to the city for review would have to meet our code for lighting, correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have.
Do we need to make that a condition?
For commercial lighting within our code and that, that would be looked at.
Does that need to be a condition that they, or is it just part of your review of their plan?
As the code stands now, there's some basic language that talks about like trespass, I believe. And so we would, we would do the review just based on what's in the code. If you want something more specific than that, then it could be added as condition of approval, but it's something.
They just don't want us to determine the lighting. I just, and if it's part of your guys' review anyway? Or do you feel like we need to make it a condition? Sorry, Lynn County processes all the electrical. We don't do any electrical permits, so most of that lighting, the plan will go to them, not us.
Okay.
But we could get a copy of it for our records, so.
So we would have to make sure a condition of approval would be a fence, though.
That lighting is acceptable to the city.
So I, I mean, I think that we have a good enough relationship with Lynn County.
Right.
Not really worried about a, a lighting problem.
Okay.
But if you wish to consider it a, make a condition of approval, that's certainly with the right. The fence, we don't have any kind of requirement for fence.
Okay.
And so that would depend on whatever conditions you wish to.
So under our new code, I knew I'd find it. 1740030, application of public facility standards, any new commercial or commercial expansion does require streetlights. Okay. And so they will be required to do it till they
Okay.
So it's already written.
It's already.
Yep.
But. Okay, but fencing is not.
No.
Okay. Is, do you know if there's any fencing along here, along the residential side already?
Well, there is a, I have a fence permit for the northern side of the tracks. I haven't gone out to see if they've put it in yet. But he did put in a fence permit to run fencing all along the northern
Okay.
side of the track, so.
Along the south, all those resident, the various residential properties and properties that are there, there's a lot of existing fencing.
Okay.
It's almost, I wanna say almost the entire length, it's, it's fenced. There is a space you can get through over by, by Mar, where it's not fenced.
Okay.
So there, there is some existing fencing there, and of course, any property owners welcome to fence their own property. And so that's certainly a possibility. Now, that being said, I, I do know that there's a history of people walking through this area, especially next to Bymar.
Yeah.
And so my, my, you know, you, you'd probably want to control the area and fence it there or find some way of diverting that pedestrian traffic a different way.
Okay.
Because when, when things aren't, when things are, are hidden, you find more. when things are, are hidden, uh, you find more instances of people breaking down a fence or putting holes in fences or something like that. Um, best way to avoid that is, I mean, people are lazy, right? They, they go for the easiest path. Some make it for them, they're more likely to take it. Um, so it it's certainly something that could be added. I don't know that it's a security issue for the properties nearby. Um, I think the main thing is people walking through.
Okay.
Some fencing probably help deter them.
Okay. So commissioners, would we want the whole property fenced or just the operational area fenced?
Well, they're only doing part of that property because FAC is doing the other.
Okay. FAC already has fenced.
They already have their.
Oh, they have it all up.
Yep, it's all up.
I mean, that's.
And do we leave that up to them? Just require fencing at a minimum around the operational area?
Yeah, or to patch the holes around the operational area. I mean, to fence the entire property might be.
Overkill.
Yeah, and very expensive.
Mm hmm.
That's a lot of linear footage.
You're saving a whole lot of money in the long run.
Fun. Yeah.
Like your mic, it's all.
Yeah, true.
There you go.
Sorry.
I, I would just thinking if it was mine, it would save a lo- a whole lot of money in the long run, just because of the potential vandalism that if it isn't fenced.
Especially because it, you know, at the first it won't be, there, there won't necessarily be someone there all the time. Um, and when it's a new facility, that's when I imagine will the mo- the most problems right off the bat when people are going through and they're not used to it being there. Taking advantage of whatever they can that's new out there.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to recommend that the fence be put along the property line or just around the service area, because they'd need a buffer to get. If it was just the service area, they needed tighten up around that, that they could still serve as the other side of the fence. As far as brush and mowing and anything that may become a hazard.
We could just say add a minimum.
If you wanted to, um, add fencing as a condition of approval, you could leave it up to their discretion to.
Yeah.
Uh, which portion of the.
Yeah.
Or how it would be fenced, but at a minimum of.
Yes.
You know, uh, at least around the area of the.
We're saying it's highly recommended.
I.
Hmm.
Conditions of approval usually aren't recommended.
No, it's.
Something that's an actual requirement, but you can leave the say that it must be fenced and then leave the manner of fencing up to the applicant.
I, I failed to ask while they were up here and I don't know if I can invite.
You could reopen the public hearing and then invite them back up to.
Yeah, unless you know, so I'm, I'm, I'll ask you first, do you know if the, this, the pay stations would be strictly credit card? Or would they at some point have coin or cash in them?
I, I do not know the answer to that.
That, that would kind of sway me a little more on, you know, harder on the fence.
And it does look like there's a nice tree buffer regarding lighting. I don't know if we're gonna get much lighting.
In that case, I would recommend just reopening the public hearing, inviting the applicant. So it's because it might be.
Okay with that. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for CU twenty three oh one at seven oh four. And I would invite our app, one of our applicants to come back up if you could. It's a quick question for you. And if you could just state your name again for the record.
Kristen Davis, uh, with One County Parks.
So on the pay stations that will be both for the RV dump facility and the potable water fill, are those credit card only units or are they also gonna have pay by cash and coin? Or how will those operate?
They have their, they're pretty custom units, so they'll make them to whatever your, suits your needs. They'll do cash. They'll do credit card. The one that we currently have in our system that's been very successful is credit card only.
Okay.
It does have an override system if we have an issue with where the credit card goes down, we can issue a guest a PIN number if they're able to go in, use it on the keypad and unlock the, the lock and dump. We do that at Riverbend because we lose power up there quite frequently.
Oh, right.
And are unable to allow guests to dump. I don't know that we would do that. And here we would probably just have it as a credit card and it'd only be a credit card is what we would use there.
So that, that's a little bit better. I think I'm not, I'm a little concerned with people going down and you know, cracking open the unit and trying to.
Yeah, I know. We've put a lot of thought into that.
Yeah.
The units are pretty tough. They're stainless steel and they sit on a, on a big, uh, concrete footing, so they're, they're relatively vandal proof.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, we put a lot of thought into that because you have to pretty much make everything out of steel or concrete to keep it young.
Yeah.
Getting hard use.
Would this be something that as part of it being a credit card only, there would have any verbiage on it that would state there's no cash inside?
Correct. The manufacturer that we get these from, there's stickers right on the top that contains no cash and.
Kristen Davis, while we have you up there, we were talking about the fencing and the security issues that we're, we're imagining might occur um, at the site. Can you give us some insight at other similar sites maybe that you have, if they have fences, if they don't have fences? What kinds of security issues you've come across, like?
We've looked at several of these systems. One system, it's, it's pretty much a mirror of our design that we've looked at in Idaho. It's over in um, Cordillane. We went and toured that. We've looked at the city Eugene system. A lot of them don't, I mean, they're, oh, like the one in Eugene, they're overall properties fenced, but it's at their, their sewage treatment plant. So honestly, security on these, there, there's not a lot there. There's usually, uh, the automated lock system. And there's the dump. So there's, you're not really protecting a, a whole lot of stuff. Um, the only thing that I was, the, one of the reasons I had considered fencing was the foot traffic that traverses that area from Bymar, you know, moving east. Um, we had had the discussion, if we fenced it all the way to our property line by the railroad tracks on the north, people are probably gonna cut a hole in the fence anyway. So we had discussed if we did fence it, setting it back from the railroad tracks to hopefully prevent the vandalism to the fencing. Fencing is pretty expensive. When I went out and got a quote, it was like twenty to twenty-five dollars a, a foot is what they quoted us. So that's honestly, in our grant that's approved, we didn't even include fencing. We're like, well, if we fence it, then we'll, I guess, phase it in over a couple of years as funding comes available. Our preference was to do it, build it without fencing first, and then if we needed it, add it later.
Right. That might be an interesting thing too. Can we can we add the condition of approval that within a certain amount of calendar days or months that it be fenced? Or at that point, what is the point?
If they're having issues, I think they would probably take it upon themselves to fence it.
That's correct. Things that are protect the investment.
Given the county's track record with their facilities, uh, I, I'm really not worried about it declining.
Right.
Simply because there's clearly a, uh, a history and practice of protecting investments and making parks next, so. Be honest, I
Agreed.
Don't think there's a, a major worry here.
Okay.
And that's our goal is to build this facility. We're, we're looking beyond our parks and more to the, the regional recreators in the area that come through and to serve, to serve them as a whole. We've already done stuff with FAC to, to really control traffic down there. We went down and installed a boulder line right now. I mean, we're not doing anything with the property, but to keep vehicles off there.
Mm hmm.
We just went off the end of FAC's fence and basically bolted it to the railroad tracks and that way no vehicles could get in there. Our intent is to leave those boulders. We'll remove a, a, a portion of them when we do pave the entry road and we'll install a gate right at the boulder line so that if we do end up not having it 24 hours, you close that, there won't be any vehicle access through there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm satisfied.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming back up. We really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So we will close the public hearing for CU twenty three oh one again at seven oh nine.
So do we want to leave it to their discretion?
I think so. I mean.
Yeah.
Based on what Blair said with the track record, obviously they're gonna be concerned. It's gonna be a fairly expensive system to put in.
And if there are issues, we know they're gonna wanna protect their asset there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I would be prepared to make a motion if we feel we're ready.
I'm good.
So I'd move to approve application CU twenty three dash zero one, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of the 12 day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize the decision.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and we have two absent, so. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down, answering our questions. Really appreciate it. It makes it a lot easier when someone shows up, so thank you. All right, so that, um, we're gonna move on to the news or update on the continuing application for our housing needs analysis. Or no, that's yeah.
So, uh, the, the consultants needed more time, uh, to finish up the work, so that's why it's that's gonna be continued again to even next. But that will be the April.
Like sixth or fifth or something?
And are they still working on addressing DLCD's comments?
Yes, they will address all their comments and.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, and so that would be the April sixth um, commission meeting.
We need to.
We just, yeah, we need to open, continue it and then close it again.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open, uh, the application LA twenty three dash zero one at seven twelve.
I would make a motion to continue application uh, LA twenty three dash zero one to our April sixth planning commission meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So we'll look forward to seeing what they have for us.
Close.
Oh, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirteen.
Now should I make the motion?
Yes. Now the motion.
What I said earlier.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I meant to catch you before that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I can't type and think and.
Yeah, no, I. I'm a one at a time kinda guy, so. All right. So we'll just go from here to staff updates. New and amazing.
Angela has been hardworking, lots of stuff that I have dumped on her that is non-planning related.
Oh.
So.
Kind of is.
She's, well, she's been working on a, on a grant application for Sankey Park and, uh, uh, I feel bad because we got a late start because of me. Um, so she's.
That's on record, right?
Paying the price.
It is now.
Yeah.
Um, but the deadline's coming, so it'll be over soon no matter what.
One way or the other.
One way or the other. Um, but other than that, I mean, things have been pretty quiet planning life. Like, just, just working on getting the, moving forward with TSP and this business with the housing needs analysis.
Final edits that you guys will be seeing. I doubt it will be the final edits, but there is edits that, um.
You have to cut it off somewhere.
Yes. And I pretty much did this week. I told Blair, I said, I'm done. Um, I'm gonna get up to DLCD next Friday if you don't tell me.
Email was like, unless you stop me, this is what's going on.
That's pretty much what I said.
Um, and then on Tuesday, the council authorized a, a, an application for a zone change for city owned property and for school district property. And also the fire district will be joining on that. Essentially, um, as you know, we now have a public dome.
Mm hmm.
And but no property is currently zoned public. Uh, and so this is essentially gonna take all of the city's property and the school district's property and the fire district's property and change the zoning of those properties to public, which will make any future changes to those properties much, much simpler, much easier to do. Excited about that.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, anything to streamline the process, I think is gonna benefit any, everybody.
Yeah, that's like a sweeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we would, we would not see simple things like the conditional use permit for the building that the fire department built. It will just be a permitted issue.
Yep. Yeah, the city has to do that also. So anytime like when we were doing property line adjustments to
Yeah.
Uh, Northside Park, I had to do a conditional use before we could do, well, we did it, we filed them at the same time, but it's the same thing. School district has to do that. You know, fire department has to do that because we're all zoned in residential zones, except there's gonna be a couple in commercials, so we have to do it every time. And so it gets to be kind of a pain. And so the school district was like, yeah, we can save a few steps. Let's go. And same with the cheap tower, so.
Excellent.
It'll, it'll streamline things quite a bit.
Nope. As usual, month of April, I'm in Arizona, so I'll be zooming in for meetings.
Okay.
When.
With Tom.
We hear back about those, um, grants that we, uh, sent recommendation letters or letters of support.
Oh, that's the one when you were gone.
Well, that would go.
When, the ones when you were gone.
Yeah.
That I got. Those projects sounded really exciting.
Yeah.
I was excited to read about them.
Um, those were all, so I was in a meeting earlier this week, uh, with, uh, somebody from Senator Merkley's office and Senator Wyden's office. And, um, those, it, it's we may never hear anything.
Right.
If they get cut. Um, and even if they do, it could be a, a year or more before anything goes. So it's, it's kind of a out there, very vague.
There's money of.
Time line. Yeah.
Kind of thing, yeah.
And, and anything that involves Congress, you really never know how long it can possibly take. I've got bills that.
Yeah.
So.
Did any city staff attend the, um, community meeting on Monday evening at the senior center?
Yeah.
What did you think?
Kelsey was there. Uh, and, uh, the, our, uh, library director, Megan Davey was there as well. And there were plenty of other from the public, others from the public thing.
What'd you think?
Uh, I thought it was good. It was, it was one of those things where I would, I would like to have multiple organizations in this, in the city go through the same process and hopefully get on the same page. But overall, I thought it was pretty good.
Oh, I do have, I wrote myself a note. Henry's training question. Henry asked that question about if you had an application.
Right.
And whether you excuse yourself. So I discussed this with Blair and you would just be as you were an applicant. You would not come up and sit up for the planning commission. You would sit down in the audience. You would testify on your own behalf and you would go sit back down. So you would not be a part of the.
Of that.
For the whole meeting that day.
So just that hearing when.
Well, for that.
Just for that hearing.
Just for that hearing.
Just that hearing.
Oh, and then come back upon the panel.
Well, once, once there, once that issue has been decided, we come back up.
Okay.
Participating in the rest of it.
So would we, maybe if that does occur, put that early on the docket?
So ideally, you would either put it at the end or the middle or some, not, not the middle, either at the, at the beginning or at the end of the meeting, just to make it easier probably.
Right.
But on the other hand, we usually don't have so many applications at the same time that it might be the only application uh, on that night. And so chips fall.
Okay.
Um, one, I don't, I'm doing a, uh, we have a training meeting with the council on Saturday. And so I have a presentation on my department to kind of go over how things work. And one of the sections of my presentation is what does the council need to know? And so there's, uh, a few items from staff perspective that I'll be including there, but I, just occurred to me, if there are any items that you, as, as a planning commission, want to make sure that the council is aware of, I'd be happy to put that in my presentation, so.
I, I think the one thing I would probably throw out is we've, we've talked and agreed upon a little bit that if, if we find an issue that we really are adamant about, that we will be sending somebody to a city council meeting on behalf of planning commission. If there's any big issue that If there's any big issue that we've deliberated on several meetings in a row, or we're just very adamant about in general that we will send a representative. And I think that's not a big deal. I don't know if they need to know that, or.
Uh, it's big, as long as it's not, I mean, if you're, if it's a I guess it depends on the, on the item. If if it's just an application for a zone change, say, or somebody's
Right.
Application that they're putting in, and you've already recommended it. Um, I, I'm not sure that it would be, if it was appealed, it probably wouldn't look good to have um, have a, the planning commission continue to press an issue. But if it's something like a development code change, or something that's more internal to the city and not having to do with a specific applicant, um, then I I don't think that there's any problems. I think that's, certainly, you're a citizen, you have the right to.
And and I I would see if, if we could encourage them, if they have any questions, and if they if they ask for a representative to come to explain something that that we would be able to provide. I think any number of us would be willing to, on behalf of the commission, go to a city council meeting.
Well, I think specifically, when we make recommendations that are outside the staff report recommendations, I think that's really the main, when we decided we were gonna make sure we sent somebody, so we could explain why we made our additional recommendation.
Okay.
We could give them a transcription of our, of the minutes.
Well, that, they do get a, usually with every, uh, item that comes from planning commission to the city council, uh, Angela and Co. events and.
That's part of their staff reports. Minutes from here.
Anything else? All right, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the planning commission meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven twenty-two.
Is it gonna be dark outside?